I'd like to call this March 3rd, 2011 Cookville City Council meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. One please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Consider approval of agenda as presented. Mr. Shipley, are there changes to the agenda?
Do have one addition. Need to add item 10, a resolution expressing support for Senate Bill 396 and House Bill 457 relative to products containing certain drugs.
Okay. Vice Mayor Epps, you sponsoring that, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Consider approval of agenda as amended, yes, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. All vote.
Bobby, yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Old business. Item 2, consider approval of minutes. Council meeting held on February 17th, 2011. Approval of the minutes.
Sound moved. Second.
All right. All vote.
Bobby, yes votes, motion carries.
All right. On to new business. Consider on first reading, ordinance 0110303, amending Title IX, Chapter IV of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to taxi regulations. Sponsor is Randy Evans.
Mr. Mayor, council, a few weeks ago, Mr. Shipley directed the police department to review our current tax cab ordinance and make any recommendations that we might have about appropriate changes. Consequently, what I prepared for, and you may have already seen, is a brief synopsis of the major changes in this ordinance. List is not all-inclusive, however, I think it captures most of the major changes. Under, one of the changes under application for the tax cab business, it falls under 9-402. Basically, what we realized in the old ordinance, there was no, there were requirements for drivers to gain permits, but there was no requirements for the actual tax cab owner, the business. So we just basically added some basic requirements in there, in those being, as you see listed there, 21 years of age, be a citizen, not being convicted of a felony in the preceding 10 years, and not be on the sex offender registry. Also, in that chapter, we removed at least a couple of items. One of those of significance was, there was a requirement in there to add, have affidavits from two reputable citizens. That was basically subjective and really unenforceable, so we removed that out of the ordinance. We also added in that you had to have a business license with the city of Cookville to conduct regular business, and you also had to have your office located in an area zone for a tax cab business and inside the city limits. Under 9-403, we changed the fee to add a vehicle from prorated to non-prorated, realizing the fact that the time that we took and the same processes that we took to inspect vehicles and paperwork was the same, whether that happened on the first day of the year or the last day of the year. So we changed that fee to a non-rated fee, non-prorated fee. Under the 9-406, we changed the mechanical conditions of vehicles. All we did there was brought that ordinance in compliance with the child passenger restraint law. So it requires each tax cab to meet the requirements of that statute. 9-410 is basically passing on the fee for the background investigation to the applicant for the driver's permit. Currently, it costs us $48 to run that Tennessee applicant processing service, background investigation. So all we would do is just pass on that same cost to the permit applicant. Under the qualifications for driver's permit, 9-411, the major change there was, it was originally, you could have never been convicted of a felony and be a tax cab driver. So we changed that. We thought it was reasonable to change that to just within the previous 10 years and not being on the sex offender registry. We also removed any drug-related charge, because that would have, if we had let that in there, you could have been convicted of a misdemeanor and still not been eligible. So we thought it appropriate that, we felt like the 10-year conviction of a felony would take care of that for us. Under 9-413, the fee for the driver's permit, again, just passing on the background investigation back to the driver or the applicant. And then last but not least, under 9-416, rules for the driver and passenger conduct, all it is added in compliance with TCA Code 3917802, 1802, rather, which is the Non-Smoker Protection Act. I would recommend passing this ordinance as amended.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion from the council.
I just have one question. Just interested, there's a lot of stuff here. I mean, I was going through the taxi ordinances. It's pretty thorough, and I appreciate that, but who checks this? Is the police department doing this, or is this our?
In the ordinance, we actually take the, take in the applications that approve the permits and enforce it.
So this ordinance we're approving is in compliance with state law? We're trying to update it?
Well, it was just, yeah, there's no, in the state law, the state law really does is, is give us the authority to regulate the business.
Okay.
It doesn't really set any parameters or really any real guidance.
Okay.
And really, all we really did was took our old ordinance and updated it.
Oh, okay.
And the taxi cab company or driver is responsible for having the child restraint devices, right?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So theoretically, if somebody shows up with a kid on their hip and they don't have the correct devices, they should send them to another company, right?
Or procure them before they haul the child, yes.
The Non-Smoker Protection Act, does that, is that while they are doing business and when they're, when the taxi is not being used for business? Does that protect that at all times?
Yeah. Well, the way the law actually reads, and I've got that here with me, I thought I did.
I think, I think what it says, Randy, is that if you ever transport the public in your vehicle, thou shalt not smoke in that vehicle.
Yeah, I believe you're correct, sir.
That's what I thought, too.
You just can't smoke in the vehicle if it's used for hire.
Good. Okay.
Have you had a lot of complaints? I mean, has our, I don't use the taxi service, so I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, has the traffic division received a lot of complaints?
We get, I don't know whether you would define it as a lot, but we do get complaints. You know, and it's generally, you know, sometimes you'll get drivers that, you know, that violate the law and, you know, just like anyone else.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't think, we don't get harassing, rude kind of behavior. Most, you know, most of them understand that, you know, we wouldn't tolerate that.
Well, thank you. I just was curious, because I, of course, this is no New York City, but I know a lot of times, a visitor's first impression of a city is a lot of times when they get into a taxi cab. And although I don't think that probably happens much here, it's more used for just transportation for locals. I think it's important that, I appreciate what you've done in order to clean up these ordinances, so I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question on the taxi permits and the liability insurance that's required. The taxi permits, are these something that you guys or we go over every year? It has to be renewed every year? Or is it just a permit while your business stays in force? And I just, you know, from my standpoint, I see the, a lot of people get insurance in place, and then soon as they get their permit, they drop their insurance, and it's, you know, just want to make sure that they keep that in force. But is that, so is that something that, like, every year we would go through?
We verify that as part of the application process.
Okay.
But you're right. I mean, I guess theoretically, anybody could drop their insurance.
Right. But I mean, the permit that they have is not something that has to be renewed every year?
Yes, it does.
Oh, it is? Okay. So then they'll have to have it then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all you can do with that?
Okay. Any other? Any discussion from the audience?
I have a question.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, if you could come to the.
Come to the microphone, please.
And state your name, if you don't mind.
It's Bobby Flanagan.
Okay.
With that 10-year thing, a felony, is that saying you can't own a cab company?
That you can't, cannot own a cab company?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
No, you cannot.
What if you done got the business license, y'all just jerking away?
I'm sorry?
If you done got a business license, done operating, been operating for a year, what do you do about that?
It would be revoked.
It would be revoked, I guess.
It won't be grandfathered in?
No, sir.
Nope.
No, sir.
So it don't make no sense how y'all could just take somebody's business away, say they paid $200,000 for it last year, y'all just taking it?
Do you have a felony in the last 10 years?
No, I'm the manager of my brother's cab company. He's got, and I'm up here representing him, he's got a felony.
In the last 10 years?
Yes, sir. It ain't like there's no sets charge or nothing like that. He had bought the company last year, and y'all just saying y'all taking it.
Shouldn't have had a permit.
The former ordinance basically said.
Couldn't have a felony.
That you couldn't have a felony at all.
Drive a cab, to drive a cab.
The driver's cab.
Not the owner cab company.
Right. But as we, you know, as I noted initially, you know, there was no, there was no restrictions on, at that time.
On owning.
For the cab owner, for the business owner. And that is an amendment to this ordinance, yes.
There was no, there was no felony restrictions for the owner?
There was not.
Prior to this amendment.
Correct.
So I guess that's a legal, that's a legal question. If our city attorney could, just jump on in there.
I'm just looking at the language, but as I understand it, the way that it's written, he wouldn't be eligible for a renewal permit. I mean, I think he can keep it until it's time for him to renew it, and then he would no longer be eligible for a renewal. Is that what the language says?
I believe you're correct.
Renewals every year?
Yes.
Every year, yes. The permits expire. Once it expires, you've got to get a renewal permit, and if he doesn't qualify, he doesn't qualify, for whatever reason.
I just don't understand how y'all could take something. That wouldn't be no different from me going out and taking nothing from nobody. I mean, that's, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a good point, but.
And the question on the insurance that y'all had a while ago, on the permit, our insurance company has to send, if we cancel our insurance, they have to send it within 10 days to the police department, saying we canceled.
Right.
They put y'all down, they put the city police down as a, like a hug or two.
Okay. I just, I've seen some of them not do that, but, I mean, they should. You're right, they should do that.
I mean, it's a requirement, it's what Sergeant Stelfs said.
That's right. Okay. And, okay, let me get this straight. Before it was the taxi driver.
Just the driver, yes, ma'am.
Just the driver.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just make a comment. And this, let me just make a comment, and I reserve the right to change my mind any time on this, but right now, I like this ordinance. I mean, this is, I think this is something that's, it provides some consistency to some of our laws. I mean, if you can, if you can own a liquor store and have, and if you've had a felony, you can own a liquor store if it's been 10 years plus since your conviction. And we do that, we do those for good reasons. And I think the same thing should follow up with our taxi cab regulations, although this is a quandary that we're in, and that the fact that your brother, the son of your brother.
Yes, sir.
Has already made the purchase. But I'm going to, I'm going to stick to voting for this, because I think for the greater good of Cookville and the way we, and being consistent with our, with our ordinances, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this now. But I, again, reserve the right to look into variances or something else maybe we can do if this is, if this is blatantly unfair. But I think it's, I think it's a good thing, for the greater good of Cookville, so.
I was going to say, I agree with the ordinance also, but it, it seems, it seems to me, if somebody has an investment in a business and was allowed to run that business because, you know, there was no restriction to it, then you say you're going to have to liquidate or do something. I mean, when I think about when we do ordinance for land use, things are grandfathered in. I don't know if there's any legal way to get around that.
You can include a grandfather clause if you want to do that, and say that anybody who met the requirements on such and such date will not, not be subjected to the new requirements, and include that in the ordinance. But it's basically the same as if this gentleman owned a business now, and he owned it for five years, and he paid a ton of money for it, and then all of a sudden, he was convicted of a felony, and he wouldn't qualify for a renewal there at the end of that year.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, you're putting in place the rules, and you can, you can create a grandfather process if you want to do that.
Do we know the thought process behind the reason, before we, this amendment came up, the thought process of a business owner, it didn't matter if they were charged with a felony or not, as opposed to a driver? Is it just caused the interaction with the public, I guess?
Well, I think it's all the above, and also, as Vice Mayor brought up, just to gain some consistency across the board with our ordinance as well.
I think it's also possible and probable that the owner of the taxi company will be driving that cab sometimes.
Yeah.
Would he not?
If he gets a city permit, he will. If he ain't had a public city permit, he don't have to drive. There's people that own construction companies that come with public every day, they've got felonies. There's people that mow yards, do roofs.
One, one.
I bet you can't find a roofer in town, but probably, probably 910's got felony.
One.
I know one that does.
I guess one of the things that I think about, this is, and again, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're going through, and, but this, this is an issue of public safety. You can, you can be a business owner and be a construction, be a construction owner, but you don't have the public's, you're not, you're not transporting the public around. It's a public safety issue for me.
What if he don't drive? He ain't transporting nothing. It's a driver.
Well, that's, that's one possibility, that.
Well, it is, but.
You could put a provision that.
I just don't see how y'all could take something from somebody.
He could not drive the cab.
Right.
If he wanted to do that. He could own it, but not drive.
Until the 10 years, is that where he goes, will drive?
We'd have to, we'd have to think about a provision for our liquor store owners, that they could own the liquor store, but they couldn't sell it.
Well, I think.
That's a whole different thing. Liquor stores are just now coming in. He's done got a business license, been operating.
Yeah, that's what I, that was the point that I was going to make. You know, with the liquor stores, it's out there right now. You know it.
Nobody's opened a liquor store yet.
Yeah, and nobody has a liquor store yet, and yet, we're talking about somebody who I'm, you're saying that you, he's been in business for a year or more?
Probably around a year.
A year? So he's got a business that's been established for a year?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Bought a business out last year, and I mean, if y'all just shut him down, I'm pretty sure that's going to cause lawsuits and everything.
Do you work for him?
Say, hey, you can't operate no more.
Do you work for him?
I'm the manager of it.
Right. How close are you to your brother?
Pretty close.
Okay. I mean, if his license.
Well, we've been in the cab business.
When it expires, you'll put it in your name.
Huh?
Put it in your name.
I mean, that ain't the issue. I mean, if y'all just, if you could take something from the citizen, I mean, I don't understand.
Everybody looks at the lawyer.
It's the same as if he gets convicted of a felony come in July. I mean, if you pass this law.
If he gets convicted of a new felony, y'all could take whatever. He'd be wrong then. I mean, but if he's abiding by the rules now, and y'all are just making a new rule.
Um, how, when you all were writing this, did you check out the, I mean, did you check out the existing taxi cab companies in Cookville? I mean, there'd be no reason to, really, because we're trying to get an ordinance established that would fit all, but, I mean, I'm wondering how often this might crop up. I mean, since we're making this new ordinance, how many taxi cab companies are there in Cookville, and?
There's three currently. But to answer your first question, yes, ma'am, we consulted actually with all of them. As a matter of fact, I probably talked to Mr. Flanagan, probably at least a half a dozen times.
Well, actually, let's also talk about why we even dug it up in the first place, because there was somebody that wanted to drive for one of the companies that had been convicted of a felony way past 10 years. But according to our ordinances, it was written, he could not drive.
That's correct.
And that's why we really started looking at it again and went through it. But one provision you could put in there is that the owner, if he's convicted, if he has a felony within the last 10 years, he cannot drive a, he cannot drive that vehicle, cannot drive a cab. I mean, that would be one answer to it.
But the owner, but, I mean, I appreciate that, but the owner is not, safety isn't just, isn't just the person who's driving. Safety is, is the person making decisions, okay? Is the person making decisions about what kind of cars he's putting on the road, what kind of drivers he's putting behind the wheel, what kind of, so in many ways, the owner is actually more significantly involved with the safety of the public than sometimes the drivers are. So I, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate that reasoning, and that would help the quandary that we're in, but again, the owner sets the tone and in many ways determines the safety of the entire company.
The owner don't make that decision either, the city does.
Excuse me, sir?
City make the decision, involve the drivers and everything. They gotta go get, I mean, run a background check and all that before they even get approved.
Mm-hmm.
And they inspect the cars, so, I mean, if they ain't safe, they inspect them.
But.
The owner picks the car up, letters it out, takes it to the city, directs it out, inspects it. And if it was the owner making that decision, we can have anybody driving.
There's lots more to discuss.
Yeah, I.
Day-to-day stuff, it's just.
Well.
I'm prepared, I'm prepared, Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to vote, but I'll concede, I'll concede to my council members, if they want to, if they want to continue discussion, that's fine with me, but I'm prepared to vote.
Personally, I think it probably deserves a little more discussion.
I, I agree.
Before I can put somebody out of business.
No. I mean, we're all about, now, and I'm going to be very careful when I say this, we want to encourage business in the city of Cookville, and we want to encourage it in a legal and profitable manner. And when I think about when we've done other votes where people were grandfathered in or, then those people were able to continue their business with no stipulations on them until that business changed hands. Isn't that right? Usually, when they sell the business or they make a significant change to it, and that kind of thing, and I agree that we need to have ordinances that limit, be careful about who's running the businesses and those kind of things, but on the other hand, I don't want to be, I don't want to be the reason someone is put out of business for when, when he started the business, he was in a legal situation. I mean, he was within the ordinance, the standing city ordinance, so. And I don't begin to understand all the legal issues.
Well, where this comes up the most is in the zoning context.
Yes.
And there's a specific state statute that deals with grandfathering folks in with zoning, so that if you change the zoning, they can continue to operate the business.
Sure.
Until they go out. But there really isn't anything in this specific context. Now, just looking back at this language, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've, you've got the applicants in 9-402 have to meet the qualifications of 9-411, numbers 1, 2, 4, and 5.
Correct.
They don't have to meet 3, which is hold a valid driver's license to drive a cab.
Correct.
They don't have to meet 6, which is not have a conviction of drunk driving or more than three moving traffic violations and other things. These are the things that I guess are designed to protect the public from a problematic driver.
From the driver, yes.
And so what is the protection that the city's fostering with the, with the felony conviction with respect to a business owner? If we're not protecting them from a driver, a business owner being a driver, because they couldn't be a driver without a valid driver's license and meeting these other criteria, what is the interest that we're trying to protect with the felony restriction on a business owner?
Well, personally, I think the Vice Mayor said it best. I mean, it was more of a, the thought process was, you know, basically just do all we could do to, you know, protect the public as a safety issue. I mean, it's certainly debatable and can certainly be changed, but I think that was the thought process.
Why would we not require them to have a driver's license so they could operate one of these cabs?
Well, if they went to that extent, then, then they would have to apply for the driver's permit. I mean, nothing would prevent them from it, but if all they were going to do was be the owner, then they wouldn't have to have the driver's permit.
I guess if they're not going to be in a cab, and they're not going to be driving a cab, then how would, how else might they interact with the public?
I might be able, do you mind if?
Please.
Mr. Raider, I mean, I can kind of, I can kind of see this maybe a little bit clearer, or I could see it, for me, I could, it seems a little bit clear, because in the business that I do, I mean, I, as a nurse anesthetist, I put people to sleep every day, and I'm basically driving that car, driving that cab. And there are lots of rules that I have to, I have to get, continue education, I've got to make sure my certification's up. I have to do lots of things in order to make sure that the public is, is safe because of my care. However, if, if the hospital administration chooses to make decisions that, that will determine how I care for patients, and if it's, if those decisions they make from on high are inappropriate for patient safety, it can be, it could be catastrophic in some reasons, in some, in some situations. And I think, what I hear our officers saying, officers saying is that somebody that has been convicted of a felony has demonstrated a lack of judgment, either in, a lack of judgment that has caused them, has caused them to be cited with a felony. And I think where I can see this is that if that person is, if the state feels like, in many ordinances, that felony people have a hard time making decisions, especially when it comes to public safety, then the day-to-day decision-making done with operating a cab company can affect the public safety. And that's kind of the way I see it. Now, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's not analogous, but that's how, that's how I see it.
But how, okay, when I've hailed cabs, and I've never gotten a cab in, in the city of Cookville, when I've hailed cabs in all of the cities that I've been in, I never come in contact with the owner, I'm always with the driver.
Most of them.
Because I stand out there and do this, and they come and get me.
But, Alma, I guess.
Yeah, you know, that, I know, I know where you're going with that, but, you know, we're talking about a person who has an established business.
And there's two different scenarios. You're a doctor, we're cab drivers. I mean, we don't go to college and get a degree. Whatever you said you was, surgery, whatever. And we ain't going to college and getting a degree to drive a cab. And we make minimum wage. I mean, it's two different things. Have you had any public call up there and say, hi, the cab, I mean, the owner? Have you had any, oh, I like to know.
Not to my knowledge.
That's what I'm talking about.
Coming there, I mean, good standing, not been anywhere.
Yeah, I could bring, I could bring a thousand of my customers up here and put it in the courtroom, whatever this is, city council. We carry people groceries in, we carry people in wheelchairs upstairs, I mean, whatever we gotta do. I mean, we're working for $4 a run.
I mean, I...
It's not an issue, it's not an issue of the character of the drivers, and it's just, it's just, this is a, an ordinance that is...
I think...
A safety ordinance is basically what it is, and it's, it's trying to figure out the, the people that are making decisions involved in the public safety.
I don't disagree with the ordinance at all. I feel like it's a perfectly good ordinance, but then, when you read that, that sounds great until somebody comes in and says, "When my permit comes up, I won't be renewed even though I have this investment in this company, and when I bought the company, the ordinance wasn't in effect, and I was a legal owner of a business, and I just have a problem with putting somebody out of business." This might be a one-time thing, I don't know.
I agree.
You know?
I agree, I...
I agree with it, too.
I love the ordinance, I mean, and I, I love what it's trying to accomplish. I mean, I think it's a great, a great idea, but when it comes to putting somebody out of business that's been running a business...
I mean, I ain't talking to him or him, so if y'all, I mean, if y'all just say, "Hey, I'm taking your business," and he's been in good, he brings all his customers, I'm pretty sure he can have a good lawsuit, I mean, a real good lawsuit.
Did you say that you talked to the, all the owners before this?
I don't know that we, we talked to all the owners. I know we, we had, I had several conversations with Mr. Flanagan, and I know Sergeant Stout and Lieutenant Cersei, who helped me draft this, had spoke with some of the other owners, and, of course, they interact with them pretty, pretty regular as far as doing inspections and permits and those kind of things. And as Mr. Shipley brought up, the reason that this even come to our attention was an inquiry, and it may have been from Mr. Flanagan, about getting a permit, and, so, I mean, that's, that's really what brought this ordinance, I guess, to the surface and caused us to look at it. But, yes ma'am, we have, you know, we interacted with them, and, you know, this thing went from the number of felonies to, you know, the length of the time, I mean, and it went back and forth as we interacted with those guys, and, you know, we discussed, you know, rates and meters and all those kind of things that we decided to stay away from in the end. But, yes ma'am, we, we, in the, to me, the question was, I, I was certainly not aware when we put this clause in here that, that anyone would not, that currently had a business would not meet it.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
I was, I was not aware of that.
I have, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm just mistalky tonight. Would your brother mind you sharing with us how long ago this felony occurred?
No, he would not. It's probably around, I'd say, maybe five years ago.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe longer.
And I don't know that it's pertinent, but would you reveal what that was? I mean...
It was for a theft.
Okay. All right.
He, he doesn't spend his time, I mean, he went to prison over it.
Mm-hmm. And he's had no more...
No more.
No more incidents with the law?
No more, nothing.
I could suggest that in nine dash four oh two, that you take out the requirement that they meet number four in nine dash four eleven.
Okay, now, say that again, Mr. Shipley.
That's for the owners. Applicants and all partners shall meet qualifications, one, two, four, and five in nine dash four eleven. Number one is be at least twenty-one years of, twenty-one years of age, number two be a U.S. citizen, and number four is the felony within ten years, and five is not listed on the Tennessee Bureau of Sex Offender Registry. So if you eliminated the requirement that they meet number four, then that would solve the problem.
For the owners?
Yes.
But leave it in there for the drivers?
Oh, yes, sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, is there any way to amend it to where the owners, I mean, be, not be convicted of a felony within the preceding five years? I mean, I, I don't know if that's gonna get it done. I mean, I hate to leave it wide open, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to have something there.
Right.
But...
I don't see why y'all couldn't just make it, if a new, I mean, like...
But to try to...
Grandfather, if he gets another felony, I mean, take it away.
What felony, three, people that commit felonies?
It's a slippery slope, though, isn't it?
Sure.
I mean, just 'cause he had a felony, not many...
Treat everybody the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Yeah, we're starting to do those.
Um... That or grandfathering? Or should we just, more discussion?
Well...
You could, you could also, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, you could, we could table, we could table this. We could table this for the, until the next, until the next, I, I got a sense of how we're gonna vote, probably vote, and if you wanna look at this more, certainly, we could just table this, we don't have to, we don't have to make a decision tonight. We could get legal, we could get legal counsel, we can talk to the, our, our police department and everybody that's put this together, and we could maybe feel more comfortable about our decision.
That'd probably be better if you did it, and next time, we'll have some attorneys come represent you, otherwise, I ain't...
Well...
We're looking for ways to work with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Just keep that in mind. We're work, we're looking for ways to work with you.
Now, I know you're, but we got attorney, but he couldn't make it, and that's Phil Parsons, I think he's talked to, what do you have?
Didn't talk to me.
I mean, I'd like to table it, I mean, I would, I would be comfortable.
Okay, Mr. Ship, or...
It's not table it.
Look, I was gonna say, we don't want...
Defer it, okay.
We're gonna, yeah, that's what I prefer to do, is that we defer it.
When's the next meeting gonna be?
Two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks, see, I just now found out about this today, it was just in the paper. I mean, if I wouldn't look in the paper, I wouldn't even knew nothing about it.
Mr. Shipley, how do we defer it? Do we have to...
You just make a motion to postpone it until the next meeting.
Okay, then, I still move.
Second.
All right. I'm assuming there's no more discussion.
Well, just a minute.
Hold on.
There's already a motion seconded on the floor.
Oh, how can you get rid of it if you don't defer it?
Motion.
What?
You could draw your motion.
Well, wait a minute, I think we might need to get the book out.
You had a motion to approve, and it was seconded.
Okay.
Uh, I think, I think that motion needs to be withdrawn.
Yeah.
So, say that again, that we have...
Retrial, withdraw it.
Okay, did I make the motion?
Yes.
Anderson, seconded by...
Okay, so I can withdraw the motion?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I've done, I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Now you have a motion seconded on the floor to postpone for two weeks.
And I move that we postpone the discussion of this until two weeks from now at the next meeting.
The discussion and the consideration of this ordinance.
And the consideration of this ordinance.
Okay.
Is everybody clear?
Yeah. And there's a second already, right?
Second already, correct. All right, so we vote.
Randy, thanks for all the work on this.
Four yes votes, one no. Motion carried.
Randy, sorry to grill ya.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, where are we? Number four, I think. Consider resolution R. 110303, amending Private Chapter forty-nine, Private Acts of nineteen ninety-nine, and Private Chapter one fifteen, Private Acts of two thousand, relative to eligibility to be a member of the Board of Trustees of the Hospital Board. Sponsor is Mr. Paul Korth from CRMC.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Said Paul Korth with the Cookeville Regional Medical Center. Here tonight to request your consideration and approval of the resolution that has been supplied to you. This resolution's been approved by our medical staff at the facility along with the Board of Trustees. This would change the eligibility for those individuals, for the medical staff members of the Board of Trustees. Would, it would also change for the medical staff members to serve on committees and the board seat also of the medical center. This change would not affect those that are employed, though those physicians that are employed would still not be eligible to be members of the Board of Trustees. Be glad to answer any other questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Korth. Do I have a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, discussion from the council.
I, I need to make a statement. As a, as a, as a officer with Upper Cumberland Anesthesia, which is an anesthesia group here in town that is, works at CRMC and is, is under contract right now currently with CRMC, I'm going to excuse myself in the vote, however, I would like to say that I do, I do support this, wholeheartedly, it's, I think it's a, this is a, a, a good change into the, into the bylaws. The medical, medical community has been changing as far as how, how they work. It used to be, twenty years ago, physicians worked very independently, now they work in conjunction with the hospital, and this is, this is not a bad thing, this is a good thing. And the pool, that pool of eligible folks to serve on that board is becoming limited because of, of the changes, and so I think this is a step in the right direction. However, because of my position with Upper Cumberland Anesthesia, I'm gonna excuse myself.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Epps. And just to kinda, I guess, clarify a little bit what this is doing, is, is like Vice Mayor Epps' group and a lot of doctors there, they have some affiliation with the hospital, some kind of financial affiliation, contracts, I mean, it's almost impossible not to have some kind of contract with the hospital to work back and forth. That doesn't mean they're employee of the hospital. We're still saying employees are restricted as far as the board is concerned. That's correct. It's just a lot of doctors and a lot of groups that are in financial contracts with the hospital will be eligible, and, because if we didn't, then, yes, like you said, the field would be very narrow.
Right.
So, so that, just to kinda clarify, I don't know if that made things worse or not, but trying to clarify.
Right.
What is the maximum number of physicians or health, licensed healthcare providers can serve at one time, can be on the board?
Correct. The charter, the resolution charter, the charter right now, there's three, maximum of three physicians and four licensed personnel. And the way, the way the board is set up right now, the board is set up that there are seven members that the council appoints to. One of those seats is, is a dedicated board, physician seat on the board. The second, the other, the other two classifications are the Chief of Staff, sits for two years, and then the mayor, the city of Cookeville, has a seat for four years. So in the past, there had been that Chief of Staff, the one physician board seat, that's one of the seven, and then in the past years, we had a mayor that was a physician, so he was the third. And then there's also another classification for licensed personnel, such as a nurse practitioner, an RN, or anything like that, but that person would still be appointed by the city council.
Okay, so, but at, at one, at any particular time, there can only be a maximum of four?
Four.
From the medical?
From the medical field, that is correct.
Okay, that's one.
Yes, three physicians and one other.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a national trend, the relationship between physicians and hospitals that...
Correct, to have some type of financial contract agreement, yes.
Basically, what you're wanting to do is, is increase the pool of the physicians that could be chosen to serve on the board.
Chosen to serve on the board, or chosen, you know, to be chief of the staff also, chief of the medical staff, right. But still, it would be the city council's responsibility to...
To appoint those people.
Appoint that board seat. You just did that last year, so this wouldn't come up for another six years, so we do have some time, but we do need to get this to, to the state for the resolution to be passed by the Senate and the House.
Thank you. Any discussion from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote?
Four yes, motion carried. I mean, five yes, motion carried.
Would you like to change your vote?
Yeah, I'd change my vote. I'd like to abstain, I'd like to abstain, Kathy, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Don't lie, attack.
I don't know if I'd get none.
Pull that trigger.
Better get ready, you're the next sponsor, so. Item five. Consider resolution R. 110304, expressing support in requesting commitments from the state of Tennessee in designation of Cummins Falls as a state park or natural area. Sponsor is Vice, Vice Mayor Epps.
The, pretty simple, I mean, this, this is a Tennessee Conservancy Board, I can't necessarily, I'm getting that wrong, obviously, but a group of folks that are committed, committed to saving and enhancing wildlife in Tennessee will use public funds and grants in order to purchase what they consider properties of, of, held in high esteem as far as wildlife. And what they do is they donate, they donate, donate those lands back, back to state institutions, counties, cities, to be kept as, as basically wild environments. This, as, as a county commissioner, this came up, and we participate in this, and it's really, it's really a very good thing. This was presented to me, and even though this doesn't, Cummins Falls area doesn't fall within the Putnam County, nor is it within the, you know, certainly it's not within the city limits of Cookeville, we do stand again as, as the closest city to this, to these falls from tourist, tourism that would, in effect, go there. And, of course, it's always a good thing, if there's properties out there that are excellent as far as terms of wildlife and ecology, wildlife ecology, that, that's always a good thing to do that. So, it's been my past experience, it's been a very good thing, and I would, I would encourage my other board members to vote for this resolution.
Thank you, Vice Ma, Vice Mayor Epps. Motion for approval?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, I believe we have, first off, is there any discussion?
I definitely think that we need to do these kind of things all the time, and particularly, or as often as we can, and particularly, it's no fun to us.
Just the...
That's okay, go ahead with it.
Did you like to do the people at the Academy Awards?
Yeah.
Wrap it up.
Oh, you told me, no more than three minutes.
I just, I just got a great idea.
Wrap it up, wrap it up.
Videos on, on everything we do, don't we?
Oh, go ahead, let's look at the video.
All right, I think we have a video. That was a quick one.
There we go.
Hello, everybody, I'm Janet Ivey.
And I'm Bill Cody, welcome in.
From east to west, wildside wonders abound in Tennessee.
Big and small, simple and grand, these natural jewels are a part of what makes our state unique.
But not all of them are open to the public. Many can be found on private land.
One of those is Cummins Falls, the largest privately-owned falls in all of Tennessee.
Recently, developers came up with a plan to build houses there, shutting them off forever from public use. But now, thanks to the generosity of a local doctor and the determination of the Tennessee Parks and Greenways Foundation, an effort is underway to save the falls. Wildside guide Ken Tucker takes us to Jackson County along the eastern Highland Rim, where the waters of Blackburn Fork River reveal a true Tennessee treasure.
It's an ordinary hike through the woods to an extraordinary destination.
This is an ancient place, several hundred million years in the making.
That requires a challenging climb down.
Don't turn loose of the rope, whatever you do.
Mark Thurman and Kathleen Williams tackle this tricky descent.
I'm weak kneed, but it's exhilarating.
Knowing their labors will be rewarded by one of the most breathtaking views in Tennessee.
I love to come down here, you can see how deep the gorge is, you know, especially on that other side. Fabulous.
Just the ruggedness of it has kept it pretty pristine.
Towering high above the Blackburn Fork State Scenic River, tree-lined rock bluffs form a protective fortress. Shaped by the water's persistent passage, these steep canyon walls can both humble and inspire.
It's definitely a lesson in scale, because suddenly, you're a lot smaller.
Right now, it's wild, it looks like it has for hundreds of thousands of years. The idea is to keep it this way.
It's an impressive view, but just a precursor to what will come. A short walk along the river, followed by a hike through a massive field of boulders, brings Kathleen and Mark to their destination, Cummins Falls. At seventy-five feet tall, it's the eighth-largest waterfall in the state in volume of water.
The beauty of this place is really unrivaled. You can travel the world and, and see beautiful places, but these are great places, right here in our backyard.
It's not very far from the hustle and bustle of my home in Nashville to get here, and when you get here, it's, it feels like you're in the middle of the wilderness. It transports you to a place where I think we all need to go, to, to the quiet room, some people call it.
Kathleen calls it "a place to experience the eternal." Within its jagged bluffs, water trickles, then mysteriously roars. While some see the falls as serenely spectacular, the panoramic landscape has also come under the spell of developers who dream of soaring profits.
This was the side that was threatened with eighty riverfront house sites all along the bluff, then the economy tanked, and it was foreclosed on.
A relief for now, but the Tennessee Parks and Greenways Foundation knew the only true way to protect Cummins Falls was to purchase it.
Not for ourselves, not for our children, but our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and for people in Tennessee for the next several hundred years. If we develop them, it may help a few, but it won't help the people that are coming behind us.
Dr. Glenn Hall bid at public auction at our urging. The auction went higher than we thought, it brought more than a million dollars for a hundred and eighty-six acres. We have a year to buy the land back from him. We have a year to buy the land back from him.
Just one year to raise over a million dollars.
I'm hoping that we'll get a little more from the state and get them to turn it into a state park or natural area.
But it's really everyday people who are determined to save it.
We've had a lot of people step up and sponsor an acre, which is very generous, $5,686 per acre, and they're, they're doing it by hosting house parties. And so it's bringing the community back to a place where the community used to come.
Over 100 years ago, the thunder of this great waterfall, once power to mill, used to make everything from corn to wool. Today, the falls nearly Olympic sized swimming hole is rated among the top 10 in the nation.
I don't see how anybody could come down here and not have an appreciation for it. I, I don't think anybody could come down here and not want to get in that pool up there and swim or wait around and play in the creek.
If the foundation succeeds in raising the money, Cummins Falls could take its next evolutionary leap. From an endangered resource that only a few are fortunate enough to enjoy, to a state park that everyone can experience with wonder and awe.
Cummins Falls is a magical place. I have children who have grown up in the electronic age and I've looked at YouTube videos with them and seen every kind of amazing thing imaginable is at your fingertip now, but it's on a screen this big. And if you want to experience life, you have to get in a place like this, and this is real.
I'm Ken Tucker, on Tennessee's Wild Side.
With your help, we can preserve Cummins Falls as Tennessee's newest state park.
Please help save Cummins Falls for its beauty that inspires.
For hiking, fishing, and swimming.
For clean water, woods, and wildlife.
For our economy and for future generations.
Join with hundreds of others who love Tennessee and who are giving back to save this wonderful waterfall for all of us.
Please call 615-386-3171, or visit ten green dot org to help save Cummins Falls.
Any more discussion, Councilman Henderson?
No, I think it said it all.
It's 12, 12 miles from, from city limits, I believe it's 12 miles away.
All right. Any discussion from the audience? Yes, sir. Please.
State your name and...
My name's Blake Buescherfeld. There's huge support for this, there's tons of Facebook groups, like it's, it's one of the big things to do on the weekend at tech is to, you know, hike down to Cummins Falls. So we would be very upset if it was destroyed.
Right, understand.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
Thanks for coming forward. All right, ask for the vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item six, consider contract amendment for peak day gas supply, sponsor is Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this is an existing supply contract that we have, it's set to expire. This amendment would extend it for an additional five years. We've had this contract in place since 1996 and it's, the cost for this is $16,500 per month to keep this supply, but I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the audience? All right, seeing none, ask for the vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item seven, consider contract for natural gas storage, sponsor is Mike Davidson.
Mayor and councils, this is a storage contract that we, we had had this 90,000 decathems of storage up until 2009. At that time, we did not keep it, we let that go back, we decided we needed to replace that, we were actually able to find it at a, at a less, less expensive cost to us. So this is something that we'd like to put back in place. It'll give us 25, it'll give us close to 25% of our annual usage we can put into storage now, and the cost is $5,015.83 per month to have this storage capacity, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the council, questions?
I always have a hard time imagining how you store that gas, but I know you know that. I mean, I know, I just see this big empty room with nothing in it because you can't see gas, but that was real.
Stored in different ways, tanks, depleted reservoirs, and salt caverns, just different ways that they stored.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience, comments? All right, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
On to item eight, consider agreement between the city of Cookeville and Tennessee Valley Authority, providing for the implementation of new wholesale and retail resale schedules, sponsor is Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, I'll make, try to make this as painless as possible. This process has been going on for almost two years now, and I quite honestly have heard more about rates than I ever wanted to in that two-year process. TVA involved all 159 distributors of TVA power in the Tennessee Valley. Comments, hundreds of meetings to discuss this change. Four key points that I wanted to talk to you briefly about, one of those is the rates are changing from an in-use rate to a seasonal demand and energy rate. The pricing is going to be based on TVA's cost to provide power during the different seasons of the year. And these rates are designed to be revenue neutral for TVA. And Cookeville is going to be moving from mid-month billing to calendar month billing, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that as well. First item, the rates changing to seasonal demand and energy. The rate structure that we have in place now has been in place for 20 years, it's called in-use rates. And again, TVA is moving to a seasonal demand and energy rate, remaining revenue neutral. But basically, what they're trying to do is to cost their power more in line with what it costs them during the different seasons of the year, opposed to having a flat rate like we've had historically. And their hope, hope there's going to be, cause people to be more energy efficient and not have to build additional capacity, as much additional capacity in the years to come. Second point I wanted to make, I just made, is going to the seasonal demand and energy where it will cost a little bit more in the summertime, there's going to be some transition months, April and May, October and November, where it'll be lower than we've seen it. And then in the winter, it'll be midway between the transition and summer rates. But all, at the end, it'll all equal out to be the same. This, this in TVA's opinion and distributors as well, provides better price signals to customers to promote energy efficiency and reduce demand, will, which will help TVA to avoid building future capacity. Second item I want to talk to you is the pricing is based on TVA's cost to provide power during the different seasons of the year. TVA, like most of the 159, if not all, distributors of their power, have gone from years ago to being a winter peaking system to a summer peaking system. That's when, that's when they set their peaks, that's when the usage is the highest. And that obviously has some problems with, you know, we're blessed with hydro generation here in this area in the Tennessee Valley, but hydro is a very small part of TVA's power mix. And in the summertime, when the load's the highest, you know, they have to shut a lot of the generation down because of the river temperatures, they, you know, when they, when they take the water in a certain temperature, they, and, and they release it, it has to be within a guideline that don't affect the aquatic and fish life downstream. Cost of power higher in the summertime, I just alluded to that just a bit, it's, it's higher in the summertime because they can't use some of the cheaper resources like hydro, and they have to go to other generation facilities that are generally higher in cost and even have to go maybe out on the market and buy power to cover those peaks. Different costs for different seasons. In, in the summertime, obviously, the power's cost is going to go up again in the transmit, the two transition months, it'll come back down, it'll go back up probably midway in the winter, then go back down in the other two transmission, transition months. But basically, four transition, four summers and four winters. As I mentioned, to begin with, this is, the rates are being designed to be revenue neutral for TVA. And with all that being said, you know, I was concerned about, well, what kind of effect is that going to have on our customers? So I, I did a cost comparison on, on three different customers, I've got a bar graph here, and as you can see, my limits are a plus a dollar and minus a dollar and a quarter, so it's not going to make much of an effect. I took a, two random residential customers, looked at their load for the previous 12 months to get real history. This is electric usage only, and I took out the infamous fuel cost adjustment because I don't know what the fuel cost adjustment's going to be in the future, so I took that out to compare apples to apples. As you can see, in April, with the new rate opposed to the old rate, it'll be 50, about 60 cents less. In May, 68 or 9 cents less. You see the summer months, it starts going up a little bit, but in no case does it get above 90 cents. The October, November transition months, back down again, back up in the winter months. The, the last bar at the end is the difference in 12 months of electricity usage, and there was only a total difference of 65 cents over that 12-month period. Another residential customer I ran, there's a 24 cent difference in a 12-month period, so 2 cents a month on the electric bill. So, so yeah, it's probably 99.99% revenue neutral for Cookeville as well. Also, wanted to look at a commercial industrial customer, and I picked one in the 1,000 KW range, something similar to what Ronnie's running down sewer plant. And run a 12-month comparison based on the kilowatt hours and the demand for the previous 12 months, and it turned out to be about $300 a, a month less on the new rate. Last slide I have, I want to talk to you a little bit about, Cookeville has historically, forever, since we started buying power from TVA, they read our meters on the middle of the month, okay? 15th of one month to about 15th of the other month, I think, I think it's 13th, but what we've done, and, and as I've told you in previous meetings, and Mr. Epps, I know you wanted me to clarify one time, we've got about 17,000 customers, about 500 of those generate about 55 to 60% of our total revenue. Those are our commercial industrial customers. With, with TVA historically reading us mid-month, you know, our power bill is about $4 million a month now. So we want to get, you know, we want them to track with us, so we've always read them mid-month, so their revenue would, would come in so we could pay our $4 million bill. With TVA moving Cookeville to calendar month, we felt an immediate need to try to move our commercial and industrial customers to calendar month as well, so we can get that revenue to match. And we thought about lots of different ways to try to do that, we involved Mike and, and his folks, and Mike was tremendous help, he understands lots more about billing, obviously, than I do, and, and his people were great as well. But the scenarios we looked at, we, we didn't want to impact our commercial industrial customers. We did feel that once we get them to calendar month billing, be a lot easier to budget and those kind of things, or at least would for me. One of the scenarios we looked at is, do we give them a short bill to get them to the first of the month, you know, instead of reading them on the middle of the month, do we start reading them on the first of the month? And we needed to get them to calendar month anyway, because that's the way the rates are based. So we thought about that quite a bit, and the problem with that is, with a short bill, the kilowatt hours wouldn't have been an issue, but they would have got a demand charge for that 15 days, and that would have been a penalty to them, and, and we didn't want that to occur. So, so we thought more about it, and we, we thought a little bit about, okay, over a period of time, should we just move them a few days at a time? That turned out not to be a good idea either, because with Mike's help, we discovered that in order, when you finally got them there, there'd be one month they'd have two bills in. Now again, kilowatt hours wouldn't be an issue, but they would get penalized because of, of the demand charge. So we finally figured out that we're going to give them a long bill. We're going to, instead of giving them 30-day bill, we give them a 45-day bill, because we were able to talk TVA into only charging them one demand. So that's, that's a little bit of a benefit to them, and that's the way we decided to, to go with our commercial industrial customers to get them to track with TVA sending us our bill. I know that was fast, if you've got any questions, please ask them, but I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion from the council?
I'd just like to comment on your hard work, appreciate all that due diligence in getting this done and explaining it and including the matter.
I really didn't enjoy it, like I said, I learned, or I didn't learn, I heard more about rates than I'd ever want to hear again.
We appreciate your work.
It's been a good process.
So, I mean, it's safe to, to assume on a residential side that the, the bills for the first, this will take effects, take effect April, is that right?
April 1, so it'll be the meters read after April 1, so see the effect of it in May.
Okay, so according to the graph, there might be a little fluctuation in the billing starting May.
Yeah, I think TVA, TVA used a little bit of common sense implementing this in the two transition, in the first two transition months.
Yeah, it looks like it, yeah, so it could go down for a couple of months to get ready to go up for a few months.
All right, switching to, switching to the calendar month for the residential, are they going to get along?
Residential's won't switch, just the commercial industrial.
But we don't want to alarm anybody, right? I mean, there won't be a big fluctuation here, we're not expecting that.
No, the two customers I looked at, again, one of them was 65 cents in a year's time, and the other one was 20 something cents, I believe.
Okay, good.
And there'll be some classes of those residential customers that'll, that'll see a decrease for the year.
And on the commercial side, is it safe to assume that we should expect Ronnie Kelly's budget to be $300 less?
Uh, that wasn't Ronnie Kelly's data I ran, so I couldn't speak to that.
Just thought I'd ask. Any more discussion from the council?
I apologize for not having a video, by the way.
Next time.
Any discussion from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. On to item nine, consider awarding bids for transformers and luminaries, sponsor is Mr. Tony Peak from the elected department.
Mayor and council took bids on 37 and a half KVA power managed transformers, recommend Utilicore as the low evaluated bidder meeting specifications. If it pleases the council, I'll address the other issue now collectively. The other item is for the 1,000 watt luminaires, recommend Wesco as a low bidder meeting specifications, recommend your approval on both items.
Thank you, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Questions, thoughts from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. All right, on to item 10, which was the, the addition to the agenda. Item 10 is a resolution expressing support for senate bill 396 and house bill 457 relative to products containing certain drugs, and the sponsor is Vice Mayor Larry Epps.
And I'm, I'm just going to go ahead and read this entire, this entire resolution just because it's, it's very important and I, so just hang in there with me. Whereas methyloate, MDPV, methadron... Whereas methylo, MDPV, methadron, fluephedron, and fluoromethcathenone are dangerous drugs found in products such as Molly's Plant Food, Purple Monkey Plant Food, and Rayvonne Bath Salts. And whereas Cookeville has experienced a rapid increase in the use of these drugs, and whereas consumption of these drugs has caused dozens of people to seek emergency medical care, some of which required intensive care, and whereas some of the known effects of these drugs include addiction, stroke, and permanent Parkinson-like movements disorders, whereas these products have penetrated our schools and pose a great risk to our children, and whereas Senate Bill Number 396 and House Bill Number 457 will amend state law to make it illegal to knowingly produce, manufacture, distribute, sell, offer for sale of possessed with intent to produce, manufacture, distribute, sell, offer for sale any capsule, pill, or other product composed of or contained in any amount of said drugs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Cookeville, Tennessee, does hereby express its support for the Senate Bill Number 396 and House Bill 457, and encourages all members of the General Assembly to vote for said bills. And I so move.
All right.
I can.
Have a second? All right, any discussion from the council?
I do have a question for our city attorney, but it, I could ask after this resolution, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay? It doesn't affect this resolution, I just have a question on these products.
Okay.
I was going to just say that, you know, we've been educated on this, and I know that the police department has done a great job of going around and educating the citizens of Cookeville about this, and everybody needs to do their due diligence, parents, teachers, ministers, youth directors. There's not a lot that we can do, and this is one way that we can support our legislature trying to make these things illegal. And I just want to give a shout-out for the police department for all that they've done, Sully Smith for what he's done. A friend of mine called me the day after he presented to us and said, "Did you know that Sully Smith is considered the nation's authority on Molly's Plant Food?" They had read that on the internet. So, you know, I think that we're doing the best that we can to stay ahead of this.
I think it's our responsibility to inform the citizens in this community if this is going on. Right now, through a technicality or loophole, these products are legal, but deadly. And until the state passes a law, the city police cannot enforce anything, but it's our responsibility, I believe, to let people know that this is going on, that it is dangerous. And until the law's passed, we need people to be very much aware of this.
I guess just from something the public may be able to do to help out, or us as well, I mean, anyone. You know, if you do go into a convenience store, or one of these smoke shops, or wherever it is, and you see this stuff on the shelves, ask the proprietor to, you know, to take it off the shelves. I mean, they may or may not be aware of what's going on with it. It never hurts to ask, so just ask them to remove it, you know, and tell them why. Tell them it's just, it's bad stuff. So that may be one thing we can do from the ground level, you know, instead of waiting for any kind of bill to pass. So it's worth a shot, but...
Anybody else? Any discussion from the audience? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right.
I did have, I didn't want to get caught up in the resolution, because I did want that resolution to pass, but I did have a question for our city attorney, Mr. Rader. I remember in the past, when, of course, when the meth, when the meth issue hit our town, the city council took it upon themselves to do some pretty drastic things, which I guess was to, one of those was to remove Sudafed, or list an ordinance, Alman, when did you, did you pull out an ordinance?
Well, it was before my time, but what they made them do is they had to show their driver's license, and they put the Sudafed behind the counter.
Right, and one of the things I'm kind of hearing as I study this issue is that the legislature, because of whatever, they're getting caught up, I guess, they're getting caught up in intangibles. I'm more concerned about, let's just do, let's just try to do the right thing. Is there anything we can do, such as some of the things that we've done in the past as far as Sudafed is concerned? Is there anything that we can do in that manner?
That is a good question, Mr. Epps. And the answer is, as far as I know, only one city in the country has tried to ban these particular drugs, or limit these particular drugs. And that was the city in West Virginia, and of course, they've got different rules on what cities can do. The city of Cookeville has, as you know, limited power as to what they can regulate and what they can do. But I certainly think that it's something that we need to study and look at, as far as, along the same lines as what was done with the pseudoephedrine and those kinds of drugs, to see if there is some way that you can deter sales through regulation. And encourage people to think twice or look twice when anybody's buying these kinds of troublesome products. The thing that's a concern is these drugs are completely legal under the federal regulatory scheme right now, and it's difficult for a city to regulate something that the federal government has elected not to regulate in a context where they have really put in some very strong regulation in this kind of preemption. So let us look and see what we can do in the form of an ordinance, is what you'd have to pass, and see what kind of ordinance we can put together and maybe revisit that during a couple of weeks.
I would appreciate that, because Sudafed is not a scheduled drug, and the federal government had no rules as far as where that can be placed, and the, you know, the things that you need to do in order to buy it. But in doing so, and when the city passed that, in doing that, a lot of people followed suit, is my understanding. I mean, once Cookeville did it, then...
The state did it too.
Yeah, Sparta did it, and then Livingston did it, and before you know it, finally the state legislature and state senate got off their thumbs and decided they could do it too. And I wouldn't, I would like to explore every avenue that we could. So if you, if you could do that...
I'd be glad to do that.
I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
It was my understanding that, at our work session when Dr. Sullivan Smith was here, that because he brought packages of each one of those that were mentioned in here, so that we could see what they were and the packaging, and on each one of them it says, "Not for human consumption," and he said that that was the biggest problem there.
Yeah.
That if we could get that eliminated, taken off of the package, then it could be an illegal substance.
That's right. Nice. Anything you do, I appreciate it.
Well, we've still got a lot of work to do on it, to see if we can do anything. If we can, obviously, we will. This is a part of the meeting, of course, where we'd like to listen to the citizens and/or delegations, if anyone wants to get up to speak about any topic. Feel free to do so. We just ask that you state your name and limit it to three minutes, if you would. All right, seeing none?
We adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.